If everyone would just bow their heads and just take in the breath of life. Thank you, God. Thank you for allowing us to be here at this city council meeting. Thank you for allowing us to be in attendance for those that are here and those that are not. We pray that you continue to bless this city council, specifically our council members, specifically our residents. We ask you to continue with the businesses that are coming in and to help us build the business that we would desire in this great city of Inkster. We are grateful for what you have already done. We are grateful for what you are going to do. Thank you, God. Thank you, God. Thank you, God. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Rebecca. Everybody please keep standing for the pledge allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Nolan.
Present.
Mayor Protem Chisholm.
Present.
Councilwoman Rutledge.
Present.
Councilman Bishop.
Present.
Councilwoman Scott.
Present.
Councilwoman Howard.
Here.
Councilwoman Richardson.
Present.
Mayor, you do have a call.
Great. Everybody had a chance to look at the agenda? You need to add or take anything off? Modify anything?
We have to remove that and take it from table.
Item A.
Oh, yeah, we do have her. So it should say removed from table?
Yep.
Okay, just put that right under A. Here. Oh, remove from table, okay. Anything else? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve agenda?
Some will.
They're probably moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes. President, we have no presentation. Nobody wants to give a presentation tonight? Anybody want singing, dance, or nothing?
Book a seat, we eat seven o'clock.
Yeah, you're right. We always count on him. You have work? Okay. No presentation. All right, consent agenda.
Approval of regular city council meeting minutes, March 3rd, 2025.
Come on, second.
They're probably moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes. Boards and commissions, any nominations?
At our last meeting, Mr. Mayor, two young ladies had approached about joining the Inkster Beautification Committee, so I forwarded information to them about the packet, so they should be either emailing in or turning in a hard copy, so just, I guess, everybody be on the lookout for that.
Okay. Hopefully, we have it ready for the next meeting. Okay. Anybody else? All right, so no ordinance first or second reading, on to new business.
Consider approval or denying a special land use 25-02 to allow for liquor, beer, and wine sales in the B1 local business district at 1173, 1183 Henry Rough. Site is located on the northeast corner of Henry Rough Road and Glenwood Street. This item was tabled per the applicant request at the March 3rd, 2025 city council meeting.
So first, we need a motion to remove from table.
I make a motion that we remove this item from the table as stated.
Support.
They're probably moved in supported. Any discussion?
Yes.
We were moving it from the table.
The beer and liquor license were tabled in?
No, we're removing it.
We have to move it from the table to discuss it. Put it back on and start discussing.
It was tabled at the last meeting.
Oh, you removed it. Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, what you said.
Okay. No problem. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay. It's removed from the table. Now, do we have a motion to either approve or deny the special land use to allow for liquor, beer, and wine sales in the B1?
I move to deny.
Second.
They're probably moved in second. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I was gonna ask, based off of the page 24 or 25, which reason we have to state for the record of the denial of the special land use. 24 or 25 of the packet.
Yeah, enhance health, safety, welfare, morals, character, comfort, inconvenience. Number eight.
You said number eight?
Yes.
Okay. So number eight, do we have any other basis for the dial other than number eight?
Three.
You said three. Improvement to the community?
I don't feel that the liquor, we need more liquor in our community, so for me, it's three.
And I guess from a, whatever kind of standpoint you want, if you look at number nine, consistent with the intended zoning ordinance?
It's special, it's required a special land use, so it doesn't allow for it without a special land use, I guess. Any other, anything else you want to place on the register? Okay. All ready for the question? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay. Denial passes. Item B?
Consider approval to adopt a resolution on behalf of the city of Inkster for road closure on Michigan Avenue between Hamlin and Bayhand, May 26, 2025, for Memorial Day Parade.
Second.
They're probably moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes.
Consider approval to purchase five vacant parcels, case number LD25-03. The parcels are located on Dartmouth between Metal Dale and Bayhand Street. Parcel IDs noted in the amount of $10,500. Deanna Moss, CFO of Armstrong Development Group, would like the land to build single families, affordable housing, residential homes.
Some will.
I thought we were tabling this.
Yeah, I'm gonna make a motion. I can make a motion to table this item, so we can get the information that was requested by the realtor.
Second.
They're probably moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes.
Consider approval authorized an administration to approve the contract with major contracting for the Henry Street water main improvements in the amount of $2,114,768.20, plus a 6% contingency of $126,886.09, for a total of $2,241,654.29 for construction.
I approve for Mr. Bivins to do his job.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. It passes. Public participation. Von Moore.
Well, first, I'll say Happy St. Patrick's Day to everyone. And to Mayor, City Council, all of our distinguished workers for the city, my lovely people that live in Inkster, back there. So I'm here to let you know about this, that time of the year again, the Unity and the Community will be having their Easter egg hunt, the marshmallow drop, egg hunt, live DJ, food, and activities on Saturday, April 12th, 2025, at the Floyd B. Simmons Center, located at 29150 Carlisle. And it will be from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00. We are still in need of donations, and we hope that everyone will come out, help us, make sure that we get the donations that we need. And we were trying to plan for 500. We do have 300 field baskets that have been promised, thanks to the police department, from the Wayne County Sheriff's and Detroit Rescue Mission. We still like to try to figure out a way that we can get 200 more baskets that's filled. It's not, it's not really good trying to fill up 200 baskets. We did it last year. That was a big task, but we did make it. And so we're asking for donations. If you know anyone that would like to donate, or can donate, if there's a business that, even if we can get 50 here, 50 there, 50 here, till we get that 200. Right now, we have a lot of things that are coming in, and I'm really proud of that. But we still need candy, so we make sure we have enough candy for all the kids. We do have enough plastic eggs, but we still need some of those. And thanks, God, to our Wesley Foundation, they donated money for some of the prizes. So right now, we're just trying to gather and make sure that we have enough for those 500. So if you know anyone, please, you can reach out to myself through the Unity and the Community, which is my phone number, you can call me either at the office, at the Inkster Housing Resident Council Office, that's at the 734-722-3738 number, or you can call me at the 3139-718-775. We will be collecting donations for candy. They can be brought to the Simmons Building from 10:00 to 2:00 every day from now until April the 8th. And after 2:00 p.m., then you can take them to the Inkster Police Department. Thank you. I appreciate everyone.
All right, thank you.
I have one question, Mr. Moore. You said it's gonna be at the Simmons Center this year?
Yes, it'll be at the Simmons Center this year. We realized that by being at the Simmons Center, we won't have to try to block off where the kids don't run all out in the street like they were when the marshmallows were coming down, so they can be in that big field that's over there across the way. That's why it's at the Simmons Building this year. I'm sorry. Any other questions?
Thank you. April Gere.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, residents, community. I have two things. Kickstart Reading Month, we've got two Saturdays left, and we have a special reader. The mayor is coming this Saturday, everybody. So.
Let's hope I can read.
He's gonna, yes, I hope he can too. He is scheduled to read Unstoppable John, How John Lewis Got His Library Card and Help Change History. So that's the book he's gonna read. So we're focusing on kids 11, excuse me, 5 to 11 years of age, and we are very thankful for people from, well, ladies from the Inkster Housing Resident Council, they're sitting there. They've been helping us recruit, and the Inkster Police Department, they've been helping us. They've got transportation. Chief Jenkins stopped in last Saturday. Mayor Protem stopped in. If anyone else would like to stop in and encourage the mayor this Saturday, please do. And then we have one last Saturday, the 29th. We have some special surprises. So that's Wesley L. Bennett Foundation. Thanks for your support. The other item is Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority is celebrating its 65th anniversary of giving service to Inkster, and we have a big gala scheduled this Saturday. Tickets are still available, community, only $125. And the event is gonna be at St. Mary's Cultural Center in Livonia, so please, you can still go on Eventbrite on our site. We're expecting Mayor Nolan, he'll be there, and other people in the community. Councilwoman Rutledge, we're looking to see her and others, if you can make it. But it's a big celebration for us, a milestone. We just hope everyone would come. We love Inkster. Thank you.
Thank you. Rebecca Dandless.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
Residents. I have to tease you because you said that you only graduated from public school, do you think you'll be able to read? No, but seriously, I wanted to give words of appreciation. I'm not sure if you guys know, but I'm thinking most of you may know that my brother passed away on January 5th. We were very close, and my house caught fire on January 7th. So this has been an extremely, extremely challenging time for me, but I wanted to really get up and give public appreciation and public thanks, first of all, to the residents that just pour out, that's poured out to me, and to my mayor, Mr. Nolan, who called to check on me. This gave me plenty of love, and to my councilperson, Stephen Chisholm, who called me a couple times and checked on me. I want to give special, special appreciation to Councilwoman Richardson, who called me the day of, the day after, and she's still calling me to make sure that I'm okay. And I just think it's important for us to be able to appreciate those that call, that, you know, call you and let you know that we're thinking about you, that that's how we build community. You know, that's how we say, "I'm gonna stay right here," because when my house, people keep asking me, well, because my house finally got released from the insurance company just two days ago, and everybody asked me, "Are you gonna get leave Inkster?" I said, "No, I'm not. I'm staying right here." I love my community, I love Inkster, and I love each and every one of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Director Lisa B.
Hello, hello, hello. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and residents. First, I just want to do a shout out to all our women, because this is appreciation to all women this month for March. So yes, pat ourselves on the back. First thing that we have going on this week that has been popular is our Hustle and Groove with DJ Chris Kelly, so we have that coming up this Thursday at the rec center. Cost is $5. Yes, we popping fans, so you guys, come on out. If you haven't got your tickets, please come to the station, get your tickets. If not, you know, you can pay at the door as well. But yes, we'd love to see you, and I have tickets tonight, so if anybody is looking for tickets, I have some tonight. The other thing that we have going on is our Project Prom. We've already started to collect donations through the deltas and through the AKAs, and so all donations can be dropped off at the station by the 21st. Along with that, we're doing what we call Project Prom Boutique. So on April 5th, Saturday, between 1:00 p.m. and 3:00, at the rec center, the girls can come out and pick out their dresses. We'll have it set up with racks, like a little boutique, and make it fun for them, you know, if they need to try on dresses, just to see, you know, if this is the fit for them, they can do that as well. Another thing that's been going on with it is our Project Prom Donation Drive. We've gotten a lot of responses where businesses have reached out that will be donating their services to do makeup, hair, haircuts for the guys. We're looking to collect gift certificates from suit shops, just to, you know, not only for the girls, but to help the guys, you know, any kids that are in need, seniors this year, to make sure, you know, they have a good, a good prom experience. So if you know of a business that is able to provide any services at a discount, or just want to sponsor a couple of teens, let me know if you know any, you know, stylists, makeup artists, things of that nature, just send them my way, and we'll be working, actually, with AIA, and they'll be able to come directly to the school, get the services done, because they have a salon inside of their school. And so it'll be, you know, just one location where they can come, get ready for prom, and just, you know, have a good experience. Since we have, okay, the parade, we will have purchase for ads, so if anyone would like to put in an ad for our booklet for the parade, you can do so. I have applications here, if anybody would like one, so you can have full page, half page, quarter page, business cards, or just your name only. And lastly, if you are interested in participating in the parade, you can reach out as well for that, and so just let me know. So, and we also are looking for volunteers, you know, if we know of anyone that's interested in possibly doing a float, it's not something that we have to do, but if you guys want to collectively come together to do that, you can do that too. And that's all I have. If you guys have any questions?
What is the due date for the ads?
For the ads, we need to have those in by the 30th, April 30th.
April 30th.
Yes.
And the, for the prom?
Yes.
So the person would have to go to the school, or what if you want to pay and send them to a salon?
If you would like to sponsor a kid, in that way, you can still just let me know. So what we're doing, we're working with the high schools, and we'll get a collection of names of who they feel would benefit, you know, because naturally, we would love to sponsor every single kid, but we're focusing on the ones that are in need, so, you know, the schools will send me a list of the students, individuals that they feel would benefit, because, you know, they're with them more, and then we'll just go from there.
What is the prom?
So, May 26th, that weekend is one of the proms, and then the week after. So we'll split them up into two groups, so that each group will be able to take advantage of the services.
So one is May 26th, and one is the following week?
Correct.
26th is a Monday?
So that'd be June the 2nd, right, and it's the following Monday?
Correct.
So that weekend, not that Monday, would it be on the Monday, or would it be?
On the Monday. So they don't, they typically don't do proms on the weekends, just because different locations is, you know, inexpensive to that.
Okay. Who's this May 26th, may I ask?
I believe that is AIA's prom is on the 26th, and then Rova Shar's is the following. I'm sorry, May 28th. My apologies. The 26th has been in my head for Memorial Day. My apologies.
May 28th, and then June 2nd?
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Mayor, I received comment, public comments from Mr. Charles Blackwell. The public comments have been distributed to Mayor and Council, and a copy will be put in the meeting minutes under public comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Trezak. Oh, you have more comments, Madam Clerk?
Yeah, that was just.
I thought that was it. I'm sorry.
He's trying to get out of here.
I attended the MAMC, the Michigan Association of Municipal Clerks, from March 9th through the 14th. I completed 120 hours within one week, and it's a three-year course, and I received my certification certificate.
She was at the casino gambling all week. You finished?
I'm done.
Oh, she's done. Councilwoman Scott.
There's someone also who wants to speak still. Are you allowing?
Oh, I'm sorry. What happened?
Did you want to make public comment?
I do.
Okay, could you come and fill out something, and then we'll get, like, we can do it right now?
You gotta fill out a little slip after that, I think, Dave.
Can I make my comment right now?
Sure, while we're waiting.
All right, so this time last year, we recognized March as Multiple Sclerosis Awareness Month here in Inkster, so I just wanted to recognize MS Awareness Month this month. We stand in solidarity with those in Inkster and beyond who are living with MS. This is a time to raise awareness, support ongoing research, and advocate for better treatment and resources for those affected. So let's continue to work together to foster a more inclusive and supportive community. I encourage everyone to learn more about MS and also join the fight for the cure. And if you have any, if you want to make donations, or, I know the walk is in, is it in May?
It's May 4th.
It's May 4th. I'm like, we don't hear nothing. Give me the, if you read it. Okay, cool. All right, so last March, we recognized March as MS Awareness Month, so we stand in solidarity with those in Inkster and beyond who are living with MS. This is a time to raise awareness, support ongoing research, and to advocate for better treatments and resources for those affected. Let's continue to work together to foster a more inclusive and supportive community, and I encourage everyone to learn more about MS and join the fight for the cure. If you have any questions, want to make donations, or join us at the walk this May, May 4th, Ms. Ava Lindsey is here, and she can kind of help guide that as well. So, yeah, if you want to.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
You all, and you all as well. Thank you for having me. I lost my husband January 7th, so I had to bow out. He died of a heart attack suddenly, and I had to kind of bow out of doing the responsibilities I have as an MS ambassador. So Lindsey, I appreciate you for being there for me and trying to help me put up the few little things that I don't think it really made a difference this year, because I didn't go out the way that I wanted to, to show the awareness for MS, but I appreciate your support more than you know. And I'm here for Inkster too. If I, if you all need me for something, I've said that before, please call on me, because my time is freed up now. I served my husband, and he's gone, so now I can serve you and God. So I'm here. Please come out to the walk, May 4th. If you want to support with money, that's fine. If you don't, and you want to walk, we all can use the exercise, as you can see. So it's gonna be downtown at the, near Shane Park. I'll have a sheet up in a week or two, so you'll see it. I'm sorry, I should have brought it, but I don't, I'm sorry. I didn't know it was gonna be, I think you told me, but I forgot. I think I forgot. But anyway, thank you to everybody for all your support. Thank you for the proclamation that you gave me last year. I appreciate you all so much. And I need to address this group right here. I gave out cups, or a gift to everybody, and one of the ladies gave them to you guys, and she took them back when I walked outside, because she thought it was just for the council. I do apologize for that. It was an oversight. You probably don't even remember. It was insignificant, but however, I just wanted you to know you weren't forgotten. I thank you for being here for me as well. So thank you again.
Thank you. Malcolm Miller.
Hello, everyone, Council, Mayor, residents. This question is about the speed humps that were placed last year. I don't know how long it's been, and they've since been removed. I live on Steinhauer, close to Western. Now, Western, it ends, at the end of Western, there's a school, Starfish, and kids, and my point was two speed humps that were on Western, which were very much needed. We noticed the difference. It was quieter, the people driving fast, and they stopped, you know, because they knew. Why were they removed? I was told to direct this to Mr. Bivins, this question. How you doing?
Yeah, please tell her why they're, why you're moving.
To the audience, to Mayor and Council, to people here, they were removed for winter. They will be put back for the spring.
Great, great.
So we class, no, we don't tear them up.
Okay, so they're coming soon?
Soon.
Soon, okay.
When the weather breaks good, they will be put back out.
Good, it's good to hear.
No, in Michigan, we might get snow.
In June, yeah.
I'm sorry.
I also wanted to thank City Ordinance Supervisor, Mr. Myers. He came on my block today of a concern I had. I won't go into detail, but he encouraged me to come to the meeting as well, and I just wanted to thank him. That's it. Thank you.
We appreciate you coming. All right. Councilwoman Bishop. Okay, Councilwoman Rutledge.
I don't have any comment, but I would like for Jerome to speak to what's going on on Michigan Ave, if he could, between Beach Daily and Middle Belt.
It'll be a long time to get here today.
Yes, there was an email sent out last week to all employees and to the city. MDOT is doing work at Michigan Avenue and Middle Belt, so they have two lanes closed right now for three weeks, and then they'll move on and close the next two lanes for three weeks. They're doing some work on their right-of-way. That's their right-of-way. But there was an email sent out, and communication was posted on our website. And cold red was sent out.
That's all? Okay. Councilwoman Richardson.
Yes, I'm glad you brought that up. Yo, that's right by my house. I can't get out! So you're saying they're doing one at a time, one side, because I noticed that most of the water that's flooding Michigan Avenue is on the right side, going that way from me, to the right side.
So they're doing the west side?
They're doing the other side, the left side first.
So they're doing that one side first? It's gonna take them three, three weeks to complete? It's gonna take them three, three weeks to complete and they're gonna move over to the next lane and it'll take another three weeks to complete all that. There's a lot of debris and concrete that was thrown into their manholes and now they're trying to clean it up. That's why it floods right there.
Yeah, but floods real bad on my side. You should've started on my side first. Okay, 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 that's fine, no problem. Are we still doing, since you, I have you, are we still doing the sidewalk, um, project? Where they repairing sidewalks in front of residents?
Yeah, we're, um, waiting on an award for our money, but we have mapped out the area from Meadowbelt to Harrison, between Cherry, between Cherry Hill and Avondale.
Still missing my place, huh? Okay, alright, so, uh, Meadowbelt.
From Meadowbelt to Harrison. And from Cherry Hill to Avondale.
To Avondale?
Yes.
Okay. And this is gonna start, you wait, still waiting for the funding?
Yes. Hopefully it'll start this spring.
Okay. Okay, and just one last thing. Uh, for those of you who have, um, that need assistance with your property taxes, you still can contact Wayne County. I still have flyers here, you can make plans, uh, payment plans with them. You have until March thirty-first. So we don't want anyone to lose their home for property taxes, so please take advantage of the program. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilwoman Howard. Mayor President.
Yes, thank you. Um, this weekend, I, excuse me, I was, I was in attendance at the funeral for Pastor Hearn's son. Um, there were over two hundred people in attendance to support Pastor Hearn and his family. Um, after that, myself and Chief Jenkins patronized Inkster Restaurant, so shop Inkster did occur. I then attended another funeral service for a former Inkster resident at Michigan Memorial named Benjamin Matthews. He was the husband of Jenny Matthews, Matthews, who was my preschool teacher. Um, so I was quite shocked to see the amount of Inkster people in there because I knew they hadn't particularly stayed in that neighborhood where I used to live in, in some time. Um, but it was over a hundred people there. And I was, I was quite shocked because it was already, you know, standing room only. Actually, she's my former preschool teacher at the Lincoln site, which is across the street from Smith Chapel, so. Also, I compiled all the meeting dates for the surrounding districts that somewhat educate our students. And these are for the school board meetings. Um, we were recently asked in the past about attending school board meetings and advocating on behalf of our students because, um, sometimes after Count Day, our students are treated as transplants. As if I don't have enough on my plate already, I did commit to trying to go to one in no particular order, but in the different districts as we can. Taylor did reach out to us and asked us to attend, Taylor Superintendent, I'm sorry, their retreat, um, I believe sometime in April. Um, so I will be in attendance at that and I think in the past, Westwood, uh, school superintendent had a community conversation here. But I'm gonna try to do my part and if anybody up here wants me to send you those dates, um, I guess because I had nothing else to do but compile dates, I will share them with you all. Also, again, did attend the March's Reading Month. That was in between, you know, the funerals and getting something to eat. And it was refreshing to see the reading activity that was going on in Inkster Library. When I went to the Canton Public Library last week, mm, I guess you could say about five thirty, six o'clock. The amount of kids that they have in there for tutoring and just enrichment and the different programs and stuff, it was mind-boggling to see all of that activity. And so to come over to Inkster Library on a different occasion, for something totally different, March's Reading Month, and see what they were participating in, it gave hope, it was rejuvenating, and I was proud. Um, so I hope that we are able to continue moving forward with items as such, even though we don't have a school district, but it's the least we could do, we could start somewhere and making sure that we stay in touch with our students who are here, who go out every day and grow up and represent us. And that is all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Uh, speaking of students, I had a chance to visit Thomason Middle School last week. We had a ball over there. You, you, you guys gotta go hang out with our kids, they're loud. But a lot of fun and very smart, you know, we, we did question and answer. We spent about an hour and fifteen minutes there to kick us out so we can let the kids go home for the day. We had a good time doing that, kind of an extension of Black History Month. Also, don't forget the water meters are coming. You should've saw on your water bills, a little, uh, information on the water meters. We'll start installing next month. We're gonna start with the trash, we're gonna do by trash day pickup. So we're gonna start with the Monday trash day pickup. So be looking for a letter from Hydro Core, Hydro Core, so you can schedule your appointment to get your new water meter installed. So make sure, and if your name, some people don't open their water bills because they don't wanna pay them. So make sure you tell your neighbors and everybody to open this and read the information so they'll know what's coming down the pipeline. And also I want to introduce Venus Cody, who's our new IT Director, some of you may recognize. You know, he, he, he used to work here, he left us, now we stole him back from the city of Westland, so he is back. And, and the city, the mayor of the city of Westland is mad at me right now. I had to do what I had to do. Alright, that's all I have, guys. Uh, we can't adjourn the meeting till we go into closed session. So we have a motion to go into closed session? You got a list of what cases you want to talk about?
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, we have Brock, uh, Standifer. Yes, Brock Standifer, Stratford Place Platinum Acquisitions, Ellen Clark, Wesley.
And we also have an employment matter, uh, composition committee from Mayor and Council we want to talk about in closed session. Do we have a motion?
Support? I understand he listed to go on the coast.
Alright, been moved, supported discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay? We can't hang out with y'all now, we gotta go into closed session. But Happy Saint Patrick's Day, drink green beer. It's not too late, bars don't close till two.